All right, then, let's call the November 4th School Board meeting to order at 6:02 PM. I'll begin as usual with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and for all. Next matter would be public comment. We'll open public comment at 6:02. It will be open for 30 minutes. If any from the public has any comment to make, you are welcome. Okay, then we will move on with our agenda. Public comment will remain open for half an hour. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Dan and Megan, have you had a chance to review the minutes?
I had no comments.
No comments or edits?
Good to me.
Okay, I have comments or edits? I think just, so this is just for the public minutes, but page two, section 4.2, it has inaudible to begin the paragraph about solar project update and financing. I believe that's you, Dr. Andruski?
Yeah.
Have to fill that in. Then on page three, the very bottom of the page, 6.3, there's public policy committee update, but it's blank, and I think we can just add that Mr. Duffy reported the committee had not yet met.
Got it.
And the last one I have is page four, section 7.1. Under old business, it has, Chair Duffy noted the board goals were finalized for the 24-25 school year. I think I came at it as a bit of a question because they were in the minutes, and I wasn't sure, so I just, rather, it said Chair Duffy asked if there was consensus for the, on the board goals for the 2020, 24-25 school year, and that everything else could be the same.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the public minutes from October 7th?
I'll make a motion to approve with your revisions.
All right.
I will second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, did you have a chance to review the non-public minutes from October 7th?
Yes.
Any edits, changes? I have none either.
Good to me.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the non-public?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. Next item is central office report. We have financials and food services at the top. I don't know if we want to
Wait till Molly gets it.
Push that down?
Yeah.
Oh, there she is.
Give her a second.
Give her a second to, all right. So would you like to give a solar project update?
Yeah, I mean, we sent you the picture. We started having materials delivered. We got the interconnection contract. I know you were working on that.
I signed that and sent it back today.
Perfect. So we're just working on the price structure. The other thing that Molly and I are working on with Barrington Power, and you'll see that reflected when we talk about the budget, is just to talk about the cost savings we're going to see over the course of a year. So it's not reflected in tonight's budget, but we started getting numbers today so that we could reduce that section because of, we're not going to be paying for as much electricity. So that is the, the big pieces. So again, we're on track. The goal is to have everything done by, by December 31st, to have everything wrapped up and get going. So really happy. And Barrington Power's been super responsive to anything we've had.
That's great. They were responsive to my comments about the interconnection agreement, which is good. And, yeah, so the construction hasn't started yet. Do we have an idea when it might actually start?
Well, I can speak a little bit to it, and there's, there's three people on the crew. They're really great guys to talk to, and they've really kind of followed through on some of the asks that we had for the materials, and so everything is, is out there. They've already been on the roof. You can see on the roof that they have the safety rails that are put up, so it's like, all right, great. I know that's the, the first part of it. So we are looking forward to working with our students, staff through November and December about, you know, what exactly is going on up on our roof, what that looks like, and what kind of questions will we ask our kindergarteners, and what would we ask a fifth grader about what they know about solar power and why it's important and why it's exciting for them.
Are the students excited about it?
I think so. I think so, yeah.
Well, that is, that is good. Are you ready to go, Molly? Do you need more time to get settled?
No, sorry. I hit every red light possible on the way here.
That's fine.
So included in your board pack were two things. It was the current year financial and the proposed budget. So we'll do the current year financial first. Since last month, we did have an increase of $98,000. So a lot of it is still building the encumbrances, just because at this time, we had to submit the board pack almost two weeks ago at this point. So we're still building the encumbrances, especially in the areas related to special education as we learn more about the students and what their needs are. So I did note the high level things of what was added. Did anyone have any questions on any of those things? A lot of, it's a big number in software, but it was a lot of things altogether. So it was Ron and his team working through all the needs and putting in the purchase orders for the whole year. So that I put various, because it was about 20 things long.
And the contracted services and support, like that is for the rest of the year?
Yes, so that would be adjustments. So anybody that might have changed the plans for health insurance that they're on, we always encumber for the full year. So when you see a change, it, it's our anticipation that that would be for the full year. Same with the special ed contracted services up top. That would be what Ron and his team would, for the full year. So with that, the board pack does have a projected remaining expense of $324,000. At this point in time, I don't have any unidentified revenue. If I knew it at this point, it would have been part of the planned revenue since those were just set, as your tax rate was just set as well. Next month, I do hope to have that side-by-side analysis of all the SAU 16 tax rates. There's two that have not been set yet in the district, but I know Brentwood's has been set. So I'm just waiting for those last two to finish my side-by-side comparison. Yes, and with Lenny's help. So did anyone have any questions on the current year financial?
So just what is listed as projected remaining expense, that is, that number matches the unassigned fund balance? Are those two numbers the same?
Yes, so
Are those two terms the same?
Yes and no. So, so at the end of the year, your unassigned fund balance is what is returned in the tax rate, and that
At that.
And that makes up of two things. It's expense less than plan and revenue more than plan. So at this point in time, we don't have any revenue more than plan because we just set the revenues a few weeks ago, and that's, what, what happens is after your revenues are set, that's when your tax rate's set. So at this point in time, if we knew what the revenue was going to be, I would have made it part of the planned revenue. So when, and hopefully when we have more revenue than anticipated, in that lower box with the green, you'll see revenue higher than plan, hopefully, and the combination of that and your expenses less than plan determines what your unassigned fund balance is. That goes back in the tax rate.
Got it. So basically, the projected remaining expense matches unassigned fund balance only because we don't have revenue greater than expected?
Exactly, yes. Or different. I mean, revenue could be less than planned, too.
Well, yeah, but we don't have a number to adjust.
Exactly.
Okay.
And so with that, just keep in mind, we don't typically encumber things like substitutes. We do encumber what we know. So we encumber salaries, and we know the buses are going to be a certain expense, but we don't necessarily know how many substitutes we are going to have. So some, stuff like that will eat into the encumbrance.
Is there, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole in this, do like an estimate of, we anticipate, in a typical year, we use
We could.
100 substitute days, and so we always want to have a cushion for 100 substitute days built into the budget for a given year?
Well, we have a planned level of substitutes. We don't typically encumber, but we could add an encumbrance if you want. It's just every, every month then we have to adjust the encumbrance, and it's just one extra step in the process. So usually, I just know and kind of keep an eye on the substitutes.
But it's sort of, it's accounted for?
We do have a plan.
Just without an encumbrance?
Correct. So like, you'll see in the budget, we plan for a level of substitutes.
Okay.
Any other questions on the current year? All right, fantastic. So budget for next year. So this is our first pass at it. I did make you a chart that looks like this. It's grouped by function. So if you remember, in the accounting string, the first set of digits is two digits, and it's either 10 or 11, I, 11. That is the fund. So you have your general fund, which is 11, and your food service fund, which is 14. So you do have to budget for those two funds independently for accounting purposes, but when you put it on the ballot, or in your case, the annual meeting, it's just one number. So we have to add those two funds together. And then the second set of numbers is a four-digit number, and that is set by the state on the different functions that we can have. And so what I did in here is I grouped it by function. So you have your regular education, special education, and so on and so forth. But also, Brentwood is unique, where you guys have the first year of your bond. So the first year of the bond, you only had an interest payment budgeted. So this year, you're going to have a principal and interest payment. And I did get a hypothetical bond schedule from the bond bank, and that's what these numbers were based off of. So what I did up top is I said, okay, let's strip out the bond so we can get an apples-to-apples comparison, because in FY '25, which is your current year, the 24-25, we had budgeted $21,250, because if you remember the warrant article, it read to appropriate the full 850, but to further raise in the taxation, the 21,20, or sorry, $21,250 at the bottom of the warrant article. So when you add all the warrant articles together, that's how that got put into taxation this year. But the first year of your bond, you're going to have a principal and interest payment, and this is what the bond schedule would work out to be on your seven-year duration bond schedule. Now, that does assume we bond the full 662. So if we, when we learn more about the, what's called the tax credit, we might be able to bond less and may be able to adjust that as I learn more. I'm just still asking questions about that. So the, so the all other part is everything else. That's your apples-to-apples comparison. So while on the report it says 5.3%, everything not the bond would actually be 3.91%. Does that make sense? Hopefully, I didn't go too fast.
Makes sense.
Okay. And so then we grouped it by areas down below, and you'll see across the, across the SAU, we're just seeing an increase in special ed expenses in every single district, and that's no different here in Brentwood. So I don't know, Ron, if you want to talk to any of the specific areas?
Well, special education is, I'll just talk about the, the ones that have the percent change. Special education is due on need with contracted services, and also including an anticipated need for another paraprofessional. And also, these are our special education teachers' contract, which automatically is raised due to the contract.
And just to elaborate on what Ron said, you are not in a negotiation year, so anybody, and you have the two CBAs, collective bargaining agreements, so anybody in those would step in track per the CBA?
Slight decrease in ESL services at students with a home language other than English. So just based on actuals, that's why we see that decrease. Student body activities, there's an increase there based on enrichment. This is our payroll line for staff that are working after hours with students. Looks like a huge percent change, but it's $2,000. You see a pretty significant decrease in computer services. Over the summer, we had a project where we had to install about 32 airport or Wi-Fi zones also had to be replaced. So that was a one-time thing, so that's why you see the decrease for this current budget. And those aren't the real big changes.
Yeah, and I guess next up is the transportation, and Dr. Andruski and I had a meeting recently with First Student. So in here, we, our First Student is what they call a three-plus-two contract, so it's a three years locked in, two additional years at mutually agreed-upon agreement, I guess you could say. And so when I negotiated that several years ago, it was 2.85% the first year, 2.9% the second year, 2.95% the third year, and then 3.0, 3.0, those two additional years. So we, this would be budging for the first of those two additional years. And so we've had further conversations, and Dr. Andruski, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so there, obviously, you saw the bus strike that was about to happen, and so it wasn't as more affected by New Hampshire, but their, their union, the 633, is obviously looking at contracts and looking at what First Student drivers are getting across the country. So they're in their, their negotiation phase right now. There is a clause in there that if at any point bus drivers make over $30 an hour from First Student, that that, the three-plus-two stops, because it would put them out of a financial misappropriation, and we'd have to come back to the table. Right now, the current contract doesn't do that, but it very well could. So that's why Molly said that we've, we've looked at the 3% for next year, but we'll be going back and looking at what their negotiations are once they settle on their prices to see if that contract still stays with, with what was negotiated, or if we need to look at something more. The other part is that we've talked to many districts that surround us about going out to an RFP process. There's been three that we spoke to. The only person that has responded to the RFP is First Student. So then the need for drivers is, is, you know, real. We are really fortunate. We talked to them, they have four more drivers coming on, and actually, we're actually starting to be able to add more routes probably by December 1st. So we're in a pretty fortunate spot. We just don't have any competitors. So negotiations, Molly did an awesome job just talking about the needs of the districts and being financially responsible, especially we were in the budgeting process. So I think we'll get back to the table with them late December, early January, so we know true figures. But we told them that once we start presenting budgets to you all, and we say it's a 3% increase based on the contract we have, we can't go back to our boards and say, no, we're just kidding, it's a 5% increase. So we will work on that end to keep it as close to 3%, so this budget is reflected appropriately. But Molly's right, that, that three-plus-two that was negotiated, probably something that we wouldn't look for in the future, because it's mutually agreed upon. We'd look for a full, probably five-year contract moving forward. And again, our recommendation, and we'll bring it to all the boards, is that we would not do an RFP process. Again, time, money, and the competitors are not there.
Yep.
Some of our competitors, when they went to the RFP, the rates went through the roof. So it's just not worth it. And then the bond expense, it shows a really large percentage, but that is just what we talked about before. This year, we had principal, and next year would be principal and interest. Or sorry, first year was just interest, then principal and interest.
I might have missed this, but support services is like an increase of $52,000. What, what is that tied to?
So support services is a few different things. It's all of the health and dental for all of your employees. Now, health and dental was a little bit different this year. Usually, we're given what's called a guaranteed maximum rate and across all the health plans, and then in the springtime, they tell us what it really is, and it has to be less than the guaranteed maximum rate. This year, they decided to give us the rate, so there's no more GMR, the rate, but they also gave us a different rate per plan. And I think one of the plans that was at the highest rate, I'd have to look up to see what exactly it was, was one of the ones we offer here in Brentwood. I think it was the high deductible one that we offer, had a significant increase to it. So what we did is we looked at where people are today, what health plans they are on today, as well as take a look at the dynamics of the staff to see who might be adding to families or getting married, to see what, what adjustments we needed to make. And that's how we came up with the health and dental. What also falls in there is all of your FICA and retirement. So everybody that works over 30 or 35 hours, based off of your category of employment, whether it's teacher or employee, is put into New Hampshire retirement. In every two years, they reset those rates. And so they're actually going down just slightly. And so we have a little bit of savings there. FICA remains consistent at the 7.65%. What's also in there is any insurances like property and liability and all that type of stuff. And so what support services is, is anything, and when you look at the detailed budget, in that second set of numbers, so it's going to say 11, and then a 2,900, so anything that falls under a 2,9, next number, next number, that is what's in support services.
So it's primarily tied to the health and dental?
That's the biggest driver.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The first, my first question is, is that a high enough increase in the special education line?
Like, any particular, so when I say special education?
So like, looking at our contracted services, like if we're looking at that for this year, increasing $30,000 in November for the rest of the year, if we had a student move in, like, that doesn't feel like a lot?
That's what's been encumbered so far, is what you're saying.
Exactly.
Yeah, we, we may have to encumber more. I'm not saying it's only going to be 30 for this year.
That's what I'm saying.
There's, there's still money.
$90,000 in, as an increase if we're in November, and it's, we're saying we're going to encumber 30 for the year. If there's one more student needs a contracted RBT, like, that would probably be 30,000 for the year. So then now we're at 60 for the year, and that's two-thirds of our $90,000 increase. So I'm just, is that enough, would be my question?
I think it's going to be a good question for Ron, but also, we, we budget a lot of times on who's here, and that's where we fall back on our trust funds. So if you look on the board pack, I did include your current balances on your trust funds. So special education has a balance of $197,000.
So there's some question.
So, I mean, that's not a lot if we had an out-of-district student move in, but there is some there.
Okay.
So I know Ron does a great job of looking at the student need of who's here today, and also who's coming into the building to come up with the projections that he has, but also realizing we have that trust fund.
And when we do that, like, we look at who's in our pre-K program and coming in next year?
That's why the
Time student.
That's why you see that addition on the pair line.
Okay.
And we always have Director of Special Education there to work through the numbers and work through his staffing. So she gives a great support. So again, you're asking the million-dollar question, couldn't project ahead, but we're projecting based on what IAPs and obligations we know as of today.
Okay. I would love to have a crystal ball, but.
And I'd like unlimited resources. But.
The software, the SAU is, like, that line is going down, but didn't, aren't we picking up the, like, SAU software line?
So a lot of that stuff had already been charged to the districts. It was just needed to be moved budget-wise to the districts. So what we did is we created a Google sheet and, in the SAU office, and we had a few tabs, and one of the tabs being technology. And Jason Hills, the Director of Technology, did a great job of listing everything on there, as well as each district's financial obligation to support that. So I, Ron, I miss, I know you had conversations with Jason, as well as had that Google sheet as the resource to go off of.
So we were already doing, like, paying our portion of that software?
Yeah, so a lot of that stuff that was in the SAU budget was frontline, and we had recognized that this is really a district expense, and so we needed to appropriately move the budget over there.
Okay, but it's, so it's, it was, it's already accounted for?
Yes, all of that stuff.
And that's an, that's an even line from last year, well, this year's budget to next year's proposed budget. We're trying to not do too many increases. Every year, we look at our subscriptions, see what's popular, what's been working for students. If something is not being utilized, then we make a decision about whether we want to keep going with it or not. And like Molly said, I do work with Jason about what is that the district gets a lower rate for, what we get charged for, so.
Yeah, and so what we did is, it wasn't just technology, like Jill Lizzie, the Director of Curriculum, who'd go on and say what she wanted all the schools to, to look at. I know Russ D. had some facilities, but he really didn't the budget for facilities here.
I have three more questions, but I can pause.
Yep.
Fire away.
Go for it. Quick one. The student activities is increasing by $2,000. For these fall activities, we're charging families, which is a new thing, and so are we charging families and increasing that line? Like, are we using that budget line for something besides just after-school enrichment? Like, are we using it for something new?
No, I just think from actuals from last year, this is the first go-around for enrichment, and we'll see where we're at with that, with that line, to see if it's sufficient. The goal is to have three sections of enrichment for the year. So in, for many of the years that I've been here, we always charge for enrichment. So there is, there's a little bit of money in there, but I also know I have staff to cover for Al-Nova, another large club which has a lot of people in it. I have my talent show. So I'm just kind of being conservative with not overspending that line.
Yeah, and it's more than just after-school programs, like Ron said, Al-Nova.
There's other things.
Yeah, so like, that whole, the fifth-grade Al-Nova trip is charged there, that type of stuff as well.
That was just a question. It's like
Right.
I'm going to get rid of this question, too. That was a dumb one. And then, we talked about, when Pippi was here last year, we talked about an extra position in, like, it was a social worker or, like, extra mental health person in the staff, which is not in this budget. Is that something that is, like, still needed, or, like?
I think there's a need. I think that's, there's a need for that this year, knowing that we're starting the solar power, and I don't want to compare what's more important, because all of it's important. But it's something I'm very much interested in pursuing, in continuing conversations about what that would look like. My hope was to try to share a full-time person with, through other schools, and that just wasn't going with their budgets for this year. So it's a conversation we continue, you know, not only at the SAU office, but here with our board. So yeah, it's definitely something that's not off the radar.
Okay.
And also, just, I guess, to add to it, timing, a lot of people were reassessed this year, and that has a huge impact on the tax rate as well.
For other, like, for the district?
For all the districts in the SAU 16, so. And I mean, it's important, but that was just another contributing factor.
I mean, I just would, I don't know what you guys think, and Allison and Kate, like, but if that is like a true need of the school, then I feel like it's at least something that we should keep.
And there are currently zero of those.
We don't have a social worker. We have a full-time psychologist and counselor and our nurse, and they have their own roles here in the school. But as far as outreach for families and providing resources, they take care of that, and also their responsibilities here. So I think it is, it's not from a lack of wanting one, but more of trying to have an appropriate budget for the town. And I wouldn't want to do it at the expense of other things, because, believe me, I carefully looked at every line and tried to not add anything to these other lines. So taking something away to put that in would be a real challenge.
Yeah. And this is, it sounds like, I mean, is there scope for a full-time role for that, or is it something that would only really make sense if it's shared with other smaller schools?
Depends on, I mean, I would imagine, depending on who's hired, if we wanted somebody here five days a week, you know, it would be, you know, $120-something thousand. So that's why I thought, starting small, at least having somebody here two days a week would be a good start to see if that fit the role. So that's why I was hoping to get everybody in, to attract somebody who, you know, there could be a social worker out there that's working part-time that wouldn't mind adding a day or two, but that was the goal, so.
I mean, is that something, could we budget for a part-time person, and if the role's not filled? Like, there, like, is that something that we could do and put a role out there, and if the role's not filled, it's just not filled, but it lets us at least
Try to.
Try to find a person?
I'd be very interested in that. I just don't know what that looks like as far as.
Because that wouldn't have benefits, right? Like, if it was a part-time position, it's just.
So anything, it would have to be below, like, a 0.8 for it to not be part of New Hampshire retirement. It will, regardless of the position, it would have FICA. the position, it would have FICA. So, which is 7.65. So, percent.
But if you're like two to three days a week, that would be like a point four, right?
Two days a week would be point four, three would be point six. Yep. So what, one thing we talked about is just any, anytime you add a new position is actually having all the rationale to why that position is needed. So I, we'd be glad to come back with a budget number, but I'd want more rationale of how many days a week. So whether it's full-time or one day a week, there has to be a rationale based on the number of students, the need of the students and the need of the building. I would want to give that to you before we, we make a decision if that's in this budget or if it's something that we continue to plan out in a future budget. So we'd be glad to work on that if, if the board would like to see that and see what the number is and how that goes into a budget and be able to move forward that way.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see the rationale at the very least. Certainly don't want to, I don't, I don't think it's a waste of time to take that step. In the proposed SAU 16 budget, it was really interesting to hear Dr. Asbell's like rationale for the staff adjustment. It's proposed at $10,000 and there's just all these unforeseen scenarios that arise, right? Like people essentially doing two jobs. I forget the other specific scenarios, but just having some flexibility. And then I think back to Principal Q, a couple of meetings ago, you mentioned outside of curriculum, you sort of have no discretionary budget whatsoever. And so I'm wondering, I don't know if it needs to be a copy and paste proposed staff adjustment, just like SAU 16 Central is doing, but does it make sense to consider some sort of discretionary line item?
So it's a little bit different where the majority of their staff here is based on the CBA. So their salary adjustment is negotiated as part of that. So really it's more administrative or our hourly wages when we hire.
Yeah. But is there anything else discretionary where flexibility is beneficial outside of staff? I just keep thinking about your, your comment about you have some flexibility in the area of curriculum, but outside of that, really nothing. And it sounds like it could be challenging.
Yeah. So we get state grants, we get federal grants, so we utilize every, every dollar we can for something that we don't put in our operating budget.
Yeah.
Professional development's a good example. So every year we're, we go right to our Title II A grant to fund some of those things. So I know that's coming our way. And it's been pretty consistent through the years that I've been here. So and, you know, we do this, I do this budget every year and I really take a really hard look at what the needs are. So I think that's one of the reasons we came to, we didn't come to putting in this social worker in here right now, and it really was based on that. Look forward to kind of preparing what that role would look like. You know, I've, I've worked with social workers when I was in Manchester, but we've never had one here.
Yeah.
But we're definitely finding a need for it. So to kind of craft a narrative that I could share with everybody, talk a little bit about how that role's being covered right now, I think would be a good thing. I don't think I'm answering your question, Dan, but.
No, no, it sounds like you've thought about it and that is like highest priority. And you've been doing this for eight years. And so you're able to foresee some of the unforeseen and plan for it, which is awesome.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And the goal, the goal is to ask, to ask the town to fund the school and then be pretty close to the number that we're asking for. So.
Yeah.
That's, that's always the goal.
Then to ask the town for a number that they will approve.
Yep.
It's important.
That's always a good idea.
Yeah. Before we have any further questions from Molly, we've now had 34 minutes of public comment. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment at this point? If not, we will close public comment at 6:36. Any further questions from Molly on the budget? I'd had two sort of general questions. One, do you think we'd be ready to bring this to the Brentwood Budget Committee on December 16th?
Ooh, December 16th. Possibly. So, I mean, the only really change that I think we have is the social worker and pricing that out. Unless there's any other changes. So, I mean, we have this in a ready to go state. Ron and I can work on the presentation, which would, shouldn't take long. And we've reviewed this a million times. So I, I think really we probably want to decide on the social worker aspect before we present. So I'm assuming this is, that would be after the December meeting. So if we have that conversation, then that should be fine.
Our December meeting is December 2nd here. So we can make final adjustments. We could be ready for the 16th.
Okay. So I just, I was asked of the Budget Committee for, that date works for us. So if that date works, I will respond in the affirmative.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. And then I have a follow-up question about the, again, this maybe belongs later from committee updates, but from the Budget Committee about a sort of like a spreadsheet tracking what our bond payment schedule might look like. And then if that with the energy savings that might feed into that, if something that combines those two things.
True.
If that's something that we could pull together?
Yes, just knowing that the bond schedule is, won't be a final bond schedule. It's right now, they, I reached out to them this morning just so I could have the latest and greatest rates. They did send it and it matched exactly what I have in here.
Okay.
And that's just the first year. So I'm happy to send that to you.
Okay.
We did get an email from Barrington Power today with some information. So we can look more into that and bounce that against the schedule that I have.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Office of the principal increase of around 3%. Is that also tied to CBA or is that, where did the 3%?
Usually we do a 3% placeholder for our principal and assistant principal for their salary.
A lot, which is aligned with like cost of living.
Yeah.
But also in the, what you're looking at is the whole office of the principal. So anything in the 2,400 section is what falls under there. So in addition to the principal's salary, the administrative assistant's salary, the assistant principal's salary, there's also such things as the supplies they need to operate the office, the copier expense, printer expense. All of that falls under there. So anything that you see with a 2,400, it's going to say 11, 24, dot, dot, that falls under what you see in the, the category of office of the principal.
Got it. Hence why the increase is probably 2.98% as opposed to 3%.
Correct. So, so anybody that was part of a collective bargaining agreement, CBA, we stepped in track per the CBA. Anybody not in a CBA, we put in a 3% increase unless otherwise justified. But I don't think there was anybody that deviated from the 3% that's outside of the union here at Brentwood.
So I do have a question actually from the, the 2,400 line. And there's a amount for DEIJ support. I'm curious, is that over and above what Arlen provides?
Yes, there's two reps that get a stipend. That's the funds for that stipend.
Oh, this is the individual staff members. Okay. Gotcha. Yep. That makes sense. Molly, do you have anything else further?
Nope, that's, that's it. So in December, we'll come back with information possible social work scenarios. Did anyone else have any other requested changes other than that?
I did not. Did you have any? Since you arrived halfway through. No? Okay. Just want to make sure you have the opportunity to.
And I have to say, Ron does a fantastic job every year. So.
I agree. All right. Do we need anything further from you tonight?
No, I think, I think we have our direction on where to go and.
Be ready for a second.
All right. Then we can move on. We dismiss Molly unless you.
We certainly can.
Great. Thank you.
I mean, you, you did rush here. So if you want to stay longer, that's fine. But.
May you hit nothing but green lights on the way.
There's any lights on the way back.
Well, I misjudged how long it would be after I dropped my son off in Greenland and I looked at the GPS and I was like, oh.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Thanks.
Have a good evening. So the other thing here on central office report is the annual meeting date, which I believe we decided last week, we're good with March 3rd. You're still good with March 3rd? All right. Is there anything else we need for, for that?
Doug weighed in as well. Said it's an hour meeting. So we're going to have to hold him for that. Yeah. Yeah. So he was good with, with the third as well. Thank you for doing that, Heather.
Do we have anything else from the central office?
Not at this time.
Okay. Principal report.
Thank you. Just some updates and then Chris and I are going to talk a little bit about facilities as part of, of my report. Our PLC team leaders went through a safety and security exercise called tabletop exercise with Rich Kane. I won't go into a ton of details, but it was, the scenario was an active shooter. So it was an act, considered one of our active shooter drills where there were about 12, 14 staff members and Rich kind of, and we also had Lieutenant Doty from the Brentwood Police and Chief Byrd from Brentwood Fire Department here participating in not only our response. Rich did a fantastic job of leading us through a scenario. We had Brooke there who is our, our main receptionist or admin assistant. And of course, she's the first person to respond to anything up by walkie outside or inside of the building. But we learned quite a bit. I think our responses were strong, but there's always something good to learn from going through those exercises. So. So that happened two weeks ago. Enrichment update, we, today we sent out letters to families about students participating in our after-school and before-school clubs. It fills up like nobody's business. So we did limit signups to, you know, giving us two choices and to ensure that everybody that's signing on gets into at least one club. There's a walking club, puzzles and games, girls' math club, pet pals, and take apart with Mr. Schroder. So those are the enrichment clubs that are happening between now and the end of December. So we're excited about that.
What are they taking apart, do you know?
You name it, they take it apart. They don't put it back together, which is great. But, you know, RT, Mr. Schroder, he's always a great entity in our school. I mean, he always adds something different. He's giving, he's creating these badges for the kids that are participating and tools are assembled. They do it right in the hallway. It's extremely busy. So anything from printers to, you know, nothing dangerous.
Weed whacker gear covered in like a handkerchief on his desk right next to his bed.
I think my sons did VCRs and an overhead projector.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Mechanical, so like an arm kind of thing.
No, but it's extremely popular. And, you know, and he insists, you know, it's a kindergarten through fifth grade club. So so we thank him for returning for that. Our specialist led by Lisa Brown wrote a grant for an artist in residence who's coming the week of November 18th through the 22nd, which is African drumming. So we'll have a whole school assembly on that Monday and then every student in the school get a chance to participate in that. And then fourth and fifth graders will be part of a performance at the end of the week. And that's the update. We have obviously voting day tomorrow and student-led conferences. I made the decision to offer the back door for families who would want to avoid the, the front door voting. So they'll be coming into the, the doors over there to go to the classrooms. And November also has our friends and family hour, which was formerly Grand Friends Day. That's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And then yeah, Thanksgiving break at the end of the month. So Chris, do we want to chat a little bit about facilities?
Yeah.
All right.
So sent to you kind of the three-year plan, which will end this year of the things that have been accomplished and what we still have left to do. So, I mean, this board has been great as well as previous boards. You've, you've had about 17 major ticket items that we've had completed either through our project line, which we put into our budget each year. And we try to keep that pretty static. So it's not a large up and down or through grants or our trust funds. The ones that we still have that we're working on, we did get final quotes for the, the Alice Alerts, which are strobes and different alerts where we did not have alerts in, at our school. So we have that, that should be taken care of soon. We earmarked the $10,000 and it just came underneath that. So we didn't have to bring it to you for approval. The one thing I would say is that you do have a large surplus in our safety and security and we haven't touched it for a while. So I would say we pay for it out of our general fund for this year. But if we get into May and our numbers for our, our balance is looking lower than in years past, and maybe making our recommendation to pull that $10,000 out of that, that security trust fund. The other one that we're still waiting on, because we're trying to get that third quote for you is the, the doors right here as they've been rotted out. So that is the major project we want to fund out of this year. And then for our next year's budget, it's looking at the, the hot water here, the boiler and then paving. The other part that we will do is then we'll start to do another audit with Rusty and his crew. So we'll bring the entire crew from the SAU with Principal Q, myself, and typically we bring in the daytime custodian. We walk the building, get up on the roof. We know the roof is good because we couldn't put solar up there if it wasn't. But look at our other major systems so that we can start for the 26, 27 school year, start to put together a new three to five-year master list for your facilities needs. So it's kind of where we're at. And again, kudos to this board for being active and hitting all your major things that have come up. So we're in really good shape. And I look forward to what, you know, Rusty and his crew will dig into next for major needs in this building. Missed anything?
No, that's it.
Is the 69,000 for paving, is that something that's like in the short term?
So that would, that's your five year. So we still got a couple more years on that. So that is just to go and do the re-top for what we've done two years ago. So every five years, you should do a resurface of your, of your pavement. So it's just there as an earmark, but we really have about three more years before we should put that in.
And then this is my budget question that I got rid of in the budget time, but like the wifi thing you were talking about, wasn't that something that we have to do every couple of years?
We project every five to six. So that's your strobes, that's your wire being, yeah. Yeah. So, but remember that's also why we created that technology trust fund.
Is for that?
Yes, to, to hit that in the year six.
I knew there was like a, so we're going to put money into that.
That would be our recommendation if we have in our unreserved fund balance at the end of the year to put another 10 or, or put it as a warrant, which would be our recommendation. If we do that for five to six years, you, you won't hit it out of your budget. That, that, that fund will take care of it every six years.
Okay.
Good question.
And the items on the facilities list are those things that are also on the capital improvement plan that goes to the town?
Yep, as well as, we have stuff there for our cafeteria. So we'll start to embed that when we should start doing a replacement cycle for our cafeteria. We've been really good because we did the serving line. Our ovens were in a good spot, but in about three years, we should start putting, you know, oven, then your convection oven. So we have that in our capital improvement plan.
Okay. Anything else? Principal or facilities? Item 6.2, do we go non, we'll save that for non-public?
You don't have to. We can just let you know that unfortunately, you know, Ms. Cooper has given her letter of resignation. Her last day will be this Friday. She has a fantastic opportunity to move on to a much bigger organization. So that really benefits her, her growth of where she wants and her needs. Principal Q and I did have interviews last week. We did find a candidate that we are very high on. Looking to bring them in to the central office at some point this week to be able to talk numbers and offer them a contract. They do have experience and manage a role. So we. and, and manage a role. Um, so we are extremely fortunate right now that we were able to find someone, um, that has the experience and that we felt comfortable could come in and, and, uh, tried to mimic what Maureen is doing. She, she does a, a wealth of work. So we know it's not gonna be the same at first, but very impressed with the interview. So that's where we're at in the process. I don't know if you want to add more on that interview.
No, but the, the candidate Chris is talking about definitely has great experience, great references, um, followed up with me actually today with a nice card because they were thrilled about the energy that Chris and I have for, uh, for Swayze and, and our SAU and felt like they would want to be a part of that. So it was, feels good, looks great. Um, Maureen's been one of the best people I've worked with and, uh, it was a big hit. The day she told me, I was like, all right, what's happening? This can't be my Monday. Um, but I haven't really made any announcements to the staff. I've been waiting for our board meeting. And, um, so I'll let, I'm sure most, if not everybody already knows at this point, but I'll send official, official notice and official thank you to her.
And kids, like, are you gonna tell them or is that just gonna?
Great idea.
I've been her number one customer at home. And in the short term, like, even if this person starts, like, are, do we have lunches covered? Is it like, can we just get?
So Maureen, Maureen planned out the entire, um, lunch menu for November and a lot of it's, you know, stuff that we can, um, make quickly and, and serve quickly. We were also fortunate with the other district that Maureen is going to, that if we need to, we've worked out that she could come over and support a couple of days even after the eighth. So really great relationship, um, to be able to say, can, can we steal her for a day just so that we're not left?
So she can like prep for a couple of days.
Yes.
Yeah. And then also yours, the two assistants that help out in the kitchen are, are marvelous and can help us get on, on the, uh, get going on the right foot. But yeah, we, I think we have a very good plan. So we're, we're trying to get this person signed as quickly as possible so that we can get them in before Friday.
Don't want to go into emergency mode, uh, for lunch because if it's meat, it's frozen waffles every day and
Lindys every day.
Don't know if that's gonna fly. So, yeah.
That might fly.
Well, it's exciting that you have a candidate. That's really great.
Awesome.
So next item is report from the chair. I think we'll go through the committees. We'll save policy committee to the end just because that's
You had a nice meeting.
Hefty. Yeah. So, uh, safety and security task force update?
Yeah. So we met on the 17th and a big part of the meeting was talking about the reunification plan. Um, so if something were to happen, anything were to happen at Swayze, the SAU has a partnership with Phillips Exeter. So parents are not coming here. They are going to Phillips Exeter, specifically the athletic area of Phillips Exeter. Um, we do have on our website, and I printed it out, a, um, booklet that says it's parent information during a critical incident. It doesn't say, it says to go to Phillips Exeter, but it doesn't say where, um, and isn't, it has a lot of information, but not necessary. It's like a lot of not maybe the easiest to read. And so like, I was gonna offer to make a flyer based on what I heard and then just send you a Campbell link. That would be helpful. Um, but just to have something easy for parents, because the big thing is just getting the word out to parents before something happens. So that an incident happens, like my reaction as a parent would absolutely be to come here. But we want people to know, like, you're going to Phillips Exeter, you're going to like the hockey rink. Cause from what I heard, people are like driving in their cars and kind of like going through a loop. This says you drive and get out of your car and you get a piece of paper and like, it was a little bit different than the process. But it was a really awesome, like partnership with Phillips Exeter and, um, like it was really cool to see that, that partnership happen. Um, but just for us, like our job is really to get the word out to parents now.
So I would just, we can, um, I would ask Dr. Asbell how much she would want you to share as it may interfere with a specific safety plan. So we want to give as much information, but not here's the whole plan so that someone who wants to do harm has that. So I'll bring that out back to her and see what more she might want to modify for that.
Yeah. But just have, like, get people to know that you're going there, you're not coming here.
And
You're not, you're not going to like buy Stillwells, like just kind of like giving people a, an idea of what to do.
And I, I think we had talked also that there's going to be communication coming out right away.
Yeah.
As far as what to do, um, about, you know, something ever happened here that you wouldn't be able to access the school, the roads would be closed. So, um, but getting that information out and hopefully that's the, the pamphlet that's available on the website does give a general idea. I know we had updated it from, because it used to be X over high school. I know it's P A.
Yep. But it was a really good meeting. They always like, it's really cool to see so many different towns come together and, um, like so many different departments of different towns come together. So that's good.
Very good. Alice is not here for the superintendent evaluation committee meeting, but I think the, the, the big news on that is although Dr. Asbell is retiring at the end of the year, she still will be evaluated. And, um, that evaluation, you guys all know this, that evaluation will be used for the incoming superintendent, Dr. Andruski. So congratulations, Chris.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Was there anything else I forgot to mention for the good of the public about superintendent evaluation? As far as budget committee, um, I've been attending those meetings. Um, the next meeting will be next Monday at the Historical Society. Been going through approving different town department budgets. Recently did, um, like conservation commission, cemeteries, um, those types of departments. There's an anticipation that the municipal tax rate will be going up in 2025. Because 2024, there was a use of a lot of, uh, federal COVID funds and a large fund balance carried over. So, um, that's the update from the Brentwood Budget Committee. And of course, I'd be asked to confirm that we present our budget on December 16th, which Molly confirmed earlier. Before we go to policy, do we have any, um, board member queries or correspondence? Community engagement and the December newsletter article. Does anybody have an idea for a December newsletter article?
The school assembly sounds pretty cool. I don't know if that could be tied into a larger story.
Yeah.
You said November 18th on Monday.
That, that whole week, right?
Yeah.
We have the artist.
I mean, I think it's really cool. Like this is the second grant that, um, Lisa Brown has won for the school this year too. Like that's kind of a cool, um,
Was the first the robotics?
Yes, exactly. So maybe a combo of, you know, um, getting funds for our students to participate in these extracurricular, uh, activities. So if you would like, I could, I could, uh, write up an article and provide it to the board to submit.
I think, I think that would be great and even promoting the other enrichment things, especially the girls' math club, I think is, would fit well with that.
Yeah, I could do that.
Awesome.
And those grant wins too, like highlighting the partnership with the SAU to win those and just being proactive.
I mean, that's a lot of work.
For students going above and beyond really. That's awesome.
All right. Um, before we move on to policy, was there any other committee reports you wanted to call on?
Strategic planning committee met. I was not able to make, make that meeting, but we're looking at surveys and to go out and start implementing the strategic plan. So they'll in the end also setting up the follow-up meetings.
Okay. So strategic planning is in the planning phase?
Planning strategically.
Okay. All right. Um, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies to approve and one policy to withdraw. If you look at the materials, uh, as always, Heather does a great job with these summaries. The bulk of these policies are all the AC policies. So AC, ACA, ACAC, and ACE, which are all being amended due to changes in the law. For comments from the board member, does the teachers or union have a, any comments on any of the policies? Or did Dr. Andruski share the concern about one of the policies? That is being addressed.
That's E B C H.
Yeah.
I did not get any correspondence other than that.
Okay. Um, so I know you all read all 85 pages of the policies. Do you have any thoughts, concerns?
Can I just ask, so the EH, which is the public access to school district records, is that just, that's basically just saying that the district can charge or like the kind of like meaningless record requests?
Well, I think
Or like the kind, the like, I need your email, like.
Well, I think that the example that Dr. Asbell gave at the last SAU meeting where an individual, especially someone from out of state or somewhere that I want all of your emails for the last 10 years that refer to this item. And it takes, if you're using outside counsel to review those records, um, then I think it's appropriate, it's appropriate for the law to catch after that and say, look, it's costing taxpayers money to respond to these kinds of fishing expeditions.
So that just allowed, that's what that is saying. That allows us to charge for that.
Yes.
And you would be charging the requestor of the documents?
Yes.
And then the one, the J L D B B, which is the Suicide Prevention and Response Plan, for that one, like not really an issue with it, but we don't, do we have student identification cards?
Dr. Andruski, I talked about this before the meeting began. So great minds think alike. Thank you for asking the same question.
No problem with it. Like if we, is, do we need that as a policy if?
Brian asked the same question.
So
We have ID cards. You queued me up. Thank you. We have ID cards that are only used in the lunchroom. Students don't carry those cards with them.
Okay. And is that stuff printed on those?
I'm sorry?
Is there like all of these lifelines?
There's nothing, none of these hotline numbers or, um, eating disorder helpline number are printed on our student IDs.
Okay.
And, um, would, would this?
But it should, it would have to be.
Correct.
If we pass this.
I think they're also, would they need to be if they were, I think not in the current format where they're just held as like scanned for lunch. But if a student started to start carrying around mangyards all day, then I think you'd move in this direction.
Okay.
So are we seeing that we would need to put the sticker on?
No, right now we wouldn't because they don't carry them. Where they're, like at the high school, they have to, when they come in with the open campus, they have to show their ID. That has to be because they're carrying them all day for the purpose. For lunch, we would not.
Yeah. Just going back, speaking of IDs, we just currently after the, um, after the tabletop exercise, every staff member's ID has stickers with, uh, dispatch phone number and how to put us into Alice protocol, how to use the intercom. It's also on all the phones, but it's on our stickers too.
Better lead than not. Never.
Right?
Sorry.
When I first saw your email, I was really hoping that maybe we'd be done before she even got here. I wasn't gonna respond to that effect because that would jinx it.
Close.
But, um, and we have reached the point in the meeting, we're going through the, all the policies. So we've hit everything else in the agenda. If you have anything that you wanted to raise from earlier in the agenda, please do so.
Did we go over the next year's budget already?
We did. Uh, but we're gonna have a chance to do it again on December 2nd. Uh, we've asked for a, um, physician justification for a social worker and we'll assess what effect that might have on the budget and we'll be able to talk about that on December 2nd. So you have another bite at the apple of the, the budget. I didn't say anything significant about, uh, the superintendent evaluation committee. Just that Dr. Asbell would still be evaluated and would still use a similar framework for Dr. Andruski, if you have anything to add.
No, no, I think we'll probably talk to you and see what, what will be of value.
Sure.
Your new role.
That strategic plan is gonna be a huge value.
Yeah. No, but I, you know, I, somebody said, um, yeah, we'll, we'll talk to you about what will be of value to you.
So, uh, back to, was there anything on health and wellness committee?
No. Is, did I see, is Jean leaving? Is she hiring, is she her too?
There is something in the works. I'm not sure if that was brought to their board yet or not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, no, there is no update there. I don't, it hasn't. Yeah, no, there's no update.
All right. So we've been working our way through the policies somewhat haphazardly. We discussed a little bit about how AC, ACA, ACAC, and ACE are all related, all based on, um, Title IX updates. Uh, again, the sort of lazy, not again, because you didn't hear it, but, um, the sort of lazy response to these are all being updated in response to changes in the law, which is why these changes are being made. There was a, we did, we were just talking about, uh, J L D B B, but if there are any other questions or concerns about any of the policies or if we want to move to accepting them.
In your more thorough read, did you have any concerns regarding that?
No, we had a long discussion about the ACA and AC policies. And learning about how they, why they're being reformatted in the way they are. But no, nothing that came up that was of concern or, uh, that was controversial in any way among the policy committee. The big, the big takeaway I have is that, uh, we may have protected status for some things. Apparently we talk about hair protective is the right term, which I thought was a typo, but no, protective is correct when talking about certain hairstyles in form AC. No, I just asked the question. I was just, it just jumped out at me. Kind of thing I got set up. So, um, so there are no further comments?
I would make a motion to accept the policy changes as presented.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Um, so one more motion on the policies and that is to withdraw policy K E D. Um, and that is being withdrawn because it has been incorporated into policy ACA. So.
Make a motion to withdraw K E D.
Second? I will second that. Uh, all those in favor? All right. All right. That completes the policy committee. Uh, is there any old business?
Brian, before we do that, can I just, um, talk about the concern BTA, the Brentwood Teachers Association had for, um, policy E B C H, which was the Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene Plan. So the, the question that came up is, um, all of our teachers at the beginning of the year get, um, donations from parents with the bacterial wipes. And like, is that gonna be something that's gonna be limited to what they can do or a quick spray? Dr. Heather Murray has been working with, um, New Hampshire School Boards Association, they're attorney and And they are going to be working on the plan of what that Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene Plan is. And in it, they'll address it. One of the things that they're seeing is one-time uses of your soap dispensers or your antibacterial wipes or a spray would not be considered part of that. So, teachers would not have to get rid of the wipes. However, if it's a whole tin or container of wipes and they're outdated and we'd have to throw them away, there would be a different protocol on how we would do that. But your one-time wipes can go directly into the trash and they're not concerned about that. That will be more laid out when that plan is addressed. So, we've got a sample plan that Heather is working on right now that she will bring to the policy committee and it will address that concern. So, as of right now, no, they don't have to get rid of it. And they would not need prior approval that the plan would address that prior approval of those one-time uses. However, something like, something that's a cleaning chemical with multiple Clorox or things like that, that would be a hard no, that we wouldn't want with our kids have that proximity. So, just wanted that stated for, for BTA of what we're thinking and how that will, plan will go out. That cover to bring back to Sue and Cam. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Sorry for not.
No, it's okay.
Going back to that. Any old business or any other new business we have not yet addressed?
What's our newsletter plan?
Mr. Q is going to write something up about the grants that Ms. Brown has secured as well as the extracurriculars.
Okay.
She got another grant.
Artist in Residence.
Drummer. Is it the guy in like Dover?
Theo.
That's good.
I would like to write an article at some point about the superintendent's selection process.
There's a lot of misinformation or misunderstood, like.
Yeah, I think it should be written about. And I would be more than happy to write it.
Would January still be timely, do you think?
If you.
Have you heard any?
We do both.
Yeah, I mean.
No, I'm, I'm happy to.
Okay.
As you all know, I had an opinion on it. So, I'd be happy to write it.
So, that would be, we'd do two for December then? If you think it's might be.
If you want, I could just submit this one.
So, could you write that as a Brentwood representative of the joint board? You know what I mean? Or in that this is coming from Swayze? And that's coming from?
I don't think I can represent the joint board.
From the, I don't know, like, or can yours come just from Swayze and not from the board? And yours comes from the Brentwood Board?
Whatever you'd like me to do. Either one is fine with me.
I think that works.
I wonder too, Allison, I've got to present a plan to the joint board in January of what I'm thinking in regards to the transition and what it will look like. I wonder if that would be helpful for you about the selection committee and putting some of that plan into a January newsletter?
Okay. So, I'll just write what I want to write and then I'm not, and then I'll meet with you and add to it. Because I, I, there, I want, I mean, I, there's good information to put out there.
And there's misunderstanding about even how Esther was selected. So, I think it'd be helpful.
So, I'll provide my article to you, Brian?
Okay.
Yeah. And then to Wald to go January.
Yeah, I think it would tie in nicely.
I wasn't saying I'll write what I want to write. You know that. I wasn't like saying I was going to dismiss you. I was just saying I will write what I want to write and I'll add what you want me to write.
That's how I took it.
So, if there's no other old business or new business, I do believe we require a non-public under 91A3IIC? C correct or was?
Yes, we can go there because you're going to have to refresh my memory because I didn't have non-public on this meeting. We can go under and talk about it then.
Yeah. Okay. So, I will make that motion entered in a non-public under, or say 91A3IIC. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
I meant aye.
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 Okay. And we're back in public. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. And we adjourn. 7:34.